Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The role.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
McCormick.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hockett.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Comments and suggestions from citizens? Stand up, please, come up and identify yourself.
I've been a resident for now thirty six.
Name and address, please.
Dara Wilcox, sixteen eleven Summer Street.
Thank you.
And been living on Summer Street now for going on three years. There's been some concern on Seventeenth Street where Summer Street intersects. There's no real crosswalk signage. There's a big sign there we did have. I had spoken to Chief Johnson about some certain signs that were placed there that had just gotten run over by vehicles. Now, if they're getting run over by vehicles, imagine what could be possibly run over at six forty-five in the morning when we get our kids to the bus stop. These people only slow down when I give them my finger. So if that's telling you something, you know, this morning, in particular, Monday mornings are the worst. Countless numbers of cars pass me and I'm waving. I'm going like this. And they should stop. They don't stop. They keep going by and they're like, you know, what's this lady doing? She's crazy. Well, I'm just trying to get my kid to the bus stop. There's other children now coming up that will be going, you know, E.P. Rock, we have the hot air fair. We have football games. We have a lot of stuff going on in that that area where a lot of people want to walk to get to these places without having to drive. And a lot of parents in the area on Fairway, some of those places over on Laurel, they won't. They want to drive and they'll rather drive and park and instead of walk because it's simply unsafe just to cross the street there. In River Falls, they have a sign that does blink when you press the button. It's solar powered. I believe it has LED lights on it as well that only blinks when the person wants to cross the street. I have neighbors that like to run and walk their dogs. I know the police departments have canine demonstrations in these areas. Lots of traffic. It's definitely changed since the early nineties, you know, when I was a kid, we could walk anywhere. Now, it's just simply too busy. The speed limits aren't enforced. People are going way too fast and they don't slow down. So every day, if I'm going to be doing this for the next seven years, I'd like somebody to stop. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Cy Houston. I live at six one six Grand View Drive in Hudson. I want to speak to you tonight about refugee situation. You probably or hope you've heard that on January third at St. Pat's, there's going to be an open forum discussion about the fact that the church has been asked to host several refugee families coming in. About twenty-one people, five families, as I'm told. Recently, a fellow I worked with who had moved to Atlanta and is moving back to the Twin Cities area said to me, think about moving to Hudson. I said, that'd be great. I love Hudson. He said, well, it's welcoming, isn't it? I said, well, yeah. Right now, about all of you are thinking, of course, we're welcoming. But the question is, are we? Are we welcoming? Would we welcome several Syrian refugee families? Now, there's some folks who are opposed to this and I think primarily because it's the fear of the unknown. I don't think they have anything against these folks specifically, the ones that want to be become U.S. citizens and who want to work and live here. But there is a fear associated with, we don't know what's going on. And if you listen to the fake news stories, it's all about families such as the Syrian refugees coming in and becoming terrorists. Let me share a few facts with you about what refugees really go through. First of all, if you're a refugee coming to this country, it means you've lost your home. You cannot go home. There's no place for you. You suffer either discrimination or outright fear for your life. You don't get here on a moment's notice. You have to apply to be a refugee. By the way, if you've ever thought about applying to Harvard or applying to become a refugee in the U.S., it's thirteen times easier to get into Harvard. Becoming a refugee in the U.S. is very, very difficult. You're living in a placement camp. You get interviewed by somebody from the United States, either the U.S. Citizen Immigration Services, who actually go there to interview you and your family, or the National Counterterrorism Center, the Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, or the State Department. They're interviewing you to find out, do you have any known association with anybody that we already have on the list who has a possible terrorist connection? Do you have any outstanding warrants or criminal violations? Do you have any sort of background that would make you a security risk? If you fail on any one of those, you're out. Less than one-tenth of one percent of people who apply for refugee status to the U.S. actually get here. They have to take a medical exam to ensure that they don't have any communicable disease or mental illness or drug addiction. It's not just the U.S. government. There are nine NGOs in this country that work in trying to help refugees getting into our country. But here's how it actually works. They get placed based on a family connection. There must be family already somewhere in the region. They're given a plane ticket to get to the U.S. It's paid for by the government, but they're under a contractual obligation to repay the plane ticket once they get here. They're given a thousand dollars for the first three months that they're here, which is to pay for their rent. After the third month, that stops. There's no subsidized rent here. There's no special rent program set up for them. This is fair market rent that they have to pay. They will come in here looking for the lowest entry jobs. I had a small business and I hired a refugee. This guy had been a manager of a factory and I hired him as a cleaner. He cleaned commercial buildings for me. And he said, it's okay, it's whatever I can do to become a U.S. citizen.
You know, Cy, if I could, you know, we try to keep this to like five minutes.
Okay, certainly. Let me just say that fifty-nine percent of Americans believe that we should be doing more to help place refugees. That means three out of five. So I'm thinking that several of you are saying, this is probably a good idea. What you can do is to help allay the fears of other folks that this is not just somebody who's coming here. There has never been a refugee to this country who has been a terrorist, ever. So please attend the meeting at St. Pat's. I would like you to help me make Hudson as welcoming as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Cy, appreciate it. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Close the citizen comments and go to item four, presentation by Clint Kloss. Clint? How are you today? Thank you. Welcome, Clint.
Thank you, I appreciate you having me. My name is Clint Kloss. I'm here on behalf of KF Investments. I am a part of a group that is currently has, that currently has the old Dog Track property under contract. And tonight, I'm just briefly here to explain what our intentions are and kind of give you a concept of what we plan on doing with the site. We have engaged the mayor as well as staff several months ago and have worked on trying to put together a plan that is something that we feel and are confident would be successful as well as would be a good and a great quality product for the city as well. So what I would like to do is just kind of go through the plans and if there's any questions, you certainly can ask me at the end. As everyone knows, the property obviously has been sitting there for quite some time. And, you know, my background and my group's background is development, primarily been in the Twin Cities area. So when this opportunity came up, we felt there was a great opportunity to do something special with the property. As you see here, I kind of walk through the property so that you can kind of get an idea as what we're looking to do. And I'll point here, so obviously each, everybody has a copy, so you can kind of follow along with me. But right here, the yellow building that you see is the existing building that stands. The plan that you see there that's in your hands, it has been put together by WSB, which is a very, which is a firm that's an engineering firm in Minnesota and very highly regarded. We've also engaged Leo A. Deli, which is a national architectural firm, to help us in this process. And in the process of meeting with them and then putting this plan together and getting the details and how things look, that existing building does have potential. It certainly is an eyesore, but if we were to renovate it both on the inside and the outside, it would be something that aesthetically would match the entire development. And there is a possibility, now, we have not come to that determination that that's what we would finally do, but the potential for that is there. Even though the building itself, again, is not attractive, it would be completely redone. So if our intentions were to keep it, that is something that, you know, we, what we would be looking to put in there would be something of higher-end quality stores. And again, right now, we're working on a plan with some different groups on what we would exactly put in there. What you see attached to it here is a potential convention center. That's something that was expressed to us that would be something the city would like and that would accommodate a lot of potential opportunities for the city. We certainly are open to building and developing that. Most convention centers are municipally owned and run and operated. That is not something I'm an expert in, but if that is something that we're able to figure out how we can put that there, we would like to try to accommodate that need. What you see attached to it is a potential hotel, a higher-end hotel that on this board, it says two hundred and fifty rooms. Obviously, to reach that type of capacity of two hundred and fifty rooms, which is significant, the convention center would have to be something that was a part of that. I have engaged several high-end hotel groups and they're excited about the potential opportunity, but to have that type of capacity, that the convention center would have to be something that would be, would be there. I'll move this direction here. Obviously, right what you see here closer to the Carmichael Road is a smaller brown building. What that is, is just some small retail. There's obviously a great deal of retail further up on Carmichael, so our intention isn't to put a lot of retail in here. But that would simply be just to accommodate the surrounding area and the things that are going on in here. As we move this direction here, these maroon-type buildings are flex space for high-tech, high-tech type offices. And so we wanted to kind of just put in a mixed-use type of concept that also can be used for potential as far as part of this business campus that you see here. This, these large brown buildings that are two to three stories high, that range from a hundred and fifteen thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, square feet each with underground parking. The reason for the size and the capacity of those is simply because we have engaged some major corporations that have shown and expressed interest to us in being here and putting their corporate campuses here in Hudson. And so because of that, that is why you see a substantial part of this being a business campus. Next to that, as we kind of move down here, you have some row houses. And then on the side, the purple buildings are apartments. These two things would be a later phase, possibly a phase two to this development, but the row homes would be something we would be looking at as far as costs are concerned, above the three hundred thousand dollar mark. And then the apartments and condos obviously are dependent on the market itself, meaning obviously there's times when apartments are in high demand and other times there's, you know, the condos are in demand. So at that time, we would determine what would best fit that area. And then I'll finish here with the backside of what you see here, and that's the baseball field. We've already have a letter of intent from a baseball group, I'm actually a part of that group as well, of former professional baseball players that intend to build a stadium and put in what's called a Northwoods League team. For those that are not familiar, familiar with what a Northwoods League team is, it's a, it's a league that consists of all the top collegiate baseball players in the country. In the summertime, because of the NCAA rules, they're not allowed to, when they, they can't get drafted until after their junior year in college. So they have, they have a need to play. And so where they play in the summertime is they play in this league. It's one of the most successful leagues in the country. It was started in the mid nineteen nineties. In fact, the owner of the, of the league just got inducted into the Florida State Hall of Fame along with Joe Mauer. And, and so he's a former general manager, the owner of the league is a former general manager in Major League Baseball, minor league general manager. And he started this with the intention of obviously developing something that would allow these guys to be able to compete. And what it's turned into is an eighteen, currently, there's eighteen teams in it spread across the Midwest. And it's a very, very successful league and it's a, it's, if you've ever been to a game or familiar with it, they have teams in Madison, Green Bay. They're spread out through the Midwest, even in Canada. And it's just an incredible, incredibly fun environment. Even if you're not a baseball fan, when you go, there's a lot of other things going on around it. And with that being said, that's why we've kind of put what we, what you see here is a thirty-six-hole miniature golf course. That's something just to accommodate the users so that, again, the kids can have, do other things while their, other people are watching the games. This elaborate waterway that you see here was something that we, we put in place to accommodate the business park as well as just add a feature that could be incorporated throughout the entire site. And so this is obviously a mixed-use concept, but in speaking with the mayor and staff, we felt that we wanted to do what we could that we felt would be successful, but also do what we could to accommodate the city, not only bring jobs to the city, but also be able to put something in that would add already to a city that has a lot of great amenities and a lot of great attractions. So with that, I'll, I'll open up the floor if there's any questions and we'll go from there.
Are there's any zoning issues?
Yeah, currently, the zoning does not accommodate the, you know, this whole plan as you see it. So we would have to go through the PUD process. And we, our engineers have engaged the city and are working on putting together that plan so that we can do that. We are in the process of putting together the, to do the preliminary approvals. And so all the buy-in, the scenes work that's, that needs to be to be able to accomplish something like this has already been put in motion.
What's your timeframe for starting and what section would you be starting with specifically, probably the convention hotel?
Yeah, the, again, the hotel is going to be dependent on the convention center if we're able to get that. And again, I would frankly need some help with the city in regards to the demand of the convention center itself. But the phase one concept of what we're looking to do for a couple of reasons would be, obviously, the renovation of this building, the baseball stadium, and at least this portion of the corporate campus. The reason for that is the baseball team has already agreed to be part of the two thousand eighteen to eighteen season, which means the stadium would need to be being built in two thousand seventeen. The season would start in the summer of two thousand eighteen. So in order for that to obviously happen, that would have to be first. With that being said, this building would need to be completely renovated and redone as well. And then the corporate users that we've engaged have expressed their desire to be in, in the, in the spring of two thousand eighteen also.
Do you have letters of intent for these certain?
We have a letter of intent for the baseball group and we are close to getting letters of intent with the corporate campuses, corporate campus. But right now, what we're, they're waiting for us to get a little further in the process of preliminary approvals.
As far as the hotel and convention?
Yes, the hotel and convention center, we do not have any engagements there yet. We've, we've had many conversations, but the, the corporate campus as well as the baseball group is, we have, we have firm, firm groups that are ready to commit.
So what's your vision of a start time? You saying two thousand eighteen for the season, so next summer, earlier?
Yeah, ideally, we would want, we would want to go through the city process as quickly as we can. Obviously, we'll need the full support of the city because there's a, this is a very large project that, there's already been significant money spent on the project and, but, but we need to be able to accommodate those people. We would need to be starting a build-out probably in the summer of two thousand seventeen.
I like it so far. It's, it's a big improvement from what's up there, that's for sure.
It'd be a huge improvement. Well, it's certainly exciting. I personally welcome you and hopefully we can help you out in any way we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's a little early in the process, but what would ballpark be for the number of people who might be either working or employed in here? Is it five hundred, a thousand, two thousand?
Yeah, it actually ranges, you know, we would start, the ball club would be, would be, would start probably with the seating around two to three thousand, just as you start. A lot of the seating is pre-sold typically the previous, the previous year. And so with that being said, as you grew, the, the expansion idea would be to grow to that five to seven thousand person mark.
Said ballpark, sorry, I wasn't actually referring to the ballpark, so this whole complex.
Oh, I'm sorry.
People might be involved in, in this one way or another, working here, living here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, I was misunderstood. With the, that exact number, I can say I don't have off the top of my head. Working here, you know, the ballpark itself is going to create, you know, some summertime jobs, anywhere from a hundred to two hundred jobs during the summer. As far as the corporate campus concerned, that's a significant size. We're talking about fifty to a hundred thousand employees that would be in, you know, in the corporate campus portion of it. And then again, for the housing and things, you, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I could get those to you for, for certain, but I don't have that number off the top of my head.
How many employees did you say?
For the baseball?
No, for the corporate.
Fifty to a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand people?
And you have a letter, letter of intent for that?
Oh, you're talking about salary range?
No, no, you, well, you were talking about.
Numbers.
Yeah, the whole, the whole complex.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, what I'm referring to is that the company itself that I'm engaged has fifty to a hundred thousand. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't make that very clear.
How many people would be in the years?
Operating at, at one time, you're talking about?
Dollar.
How many employees would be working in this?
Yeah, five thousand?
Three to five.
Yeah, five thousand probably, after, yeah, it's.
Clint, what's the projected investment?
The projected, the development that you see here would be about a hundred and eighty-five million.
And projected tax revenue in the future?
Three to five million dollars.
Versus? Hundred thousand.
So you have a letter of intent for the corporate clients and so that would probably be, they're going to need time to do their thing to move or?
Correct.
What's, what's the timeframe?
They're looking at being in, they would be looking at being in two thousand eighteen, the spring.
Wow.
You're looking at the repurposing of the building. What is that hinging on and what is that sort of timing decision-wise, whether you would be able to repurpose it or not?
Really, that depends, is dependent on a client, you know, the clientele that you have in there. And so right now, we, we have some preliminary plans being drawn up by the architect of some potential users that would, would utilize it. There's a possibility the building would actually be, be split into two pieces. Its significance, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, it's quite large. I'm sure everybody has seen that. And so we are looking at splitting, splitting it and actually you can see there's a little walkway potential here that would be the entrance to the baseball field. And then you'd have two halves to that, to that building.
Liquor licenses, Clint?
Yes, there would be a need for liquor license, liquor license for the baseball park.
Originally?
What's that?
Originally, but there.
Well, it would, a couple of things, I mean, depending on what they're serving, if it was the beer and wine, that wouldn't be, I mean, we, that's different than a full liquor. But there is an exception for something that brings in more than, can serve more than three hundred people.
Yeah, convention center, entertainment.
Because we have a limited number of full liquor licenses available.
Right.
That's why I just mentioned to Rich, that's just something we have to keep them back of our head.
Yeah, that has been brought to my attention, so I was aware of that. But yeah, typically, you know, you wouldn't have the hard liquor at that facility, the baseball park.
But the retail potential restaurants.
Correct, correct, yeah, there's some smaller buildings that you see here that would be for retail or for restaurant-type facilities that would need that.
Just so we keep that in your mind as well.
Yep, absolutely.
So the expectations aren't there and then.
No, I understand.
Okay. So the proposed waterway canal there?
Yes, that would be something that, again, it's obviously it's a very nice feature in the summer, but it would be made so that there could be ice skating on it in the wintertime for the families and people that, you know, obviously were not only in the, in the development, but also anybody else that was interested, obviously, in Hudson.
Dual, I'm sorry, dual-purpose rainwater, stormwater runoff or is it?
The, you're, you're starting to get into the, the engineering stuff. I, I, you know, we haven't, we haven't met and had some conversations about that type of stuff, but I couldn't, you know, accurately.
That's fine.
Give you that, that.
But it looks down in the bottom left there, Randy, it looks like there's some drainage areas.
I see that there's a roundabout on Carmichael that does not exist right now.
Correct.
Is that something contingent on this project?
It's not, well, it's, we will need to do something with that intersection because currently with the volume of people that would be coming into this complex, something would have to be done. Whether it's a roundabout, obviously, there'd be great issues at that point if we were to do that. That would probably be ideal, but I know there's an existing bridge there that possibly there's some ramp, ramp that, you know, ramping that could be done. But that's, that was just a concept plan, but it's, there would need to be entrances. Obviously, when this was first built, there was no ability to go south on Carmichael, probably because there was no development this direction. But we have several entrances and we, we need some more access, obviously, again, for the volume.
Gotcha, so that would need to be in place before the ball field opens, obviously, in two thousand eighteen?
Well, that would be ideal, but i- if it wasn't, if it wasn't possible, we could still manage. But it would be ideal.
So it's not contingent?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think the, that section of Carmichael slash County F, right in front of there, right to the west side is, is a mess as is currently designed. And obviously, that's going to have to be rebuilt to, to handle the turnoffs that are there and you wanting new accesses that don't exist. So we're going to have to do some, be some extensive roadwork down there.
Right.
And one of the things we might like you to keep in mind is that piece of road is a bottleneck for pedestrian and bicycle traffic either side of that. It's safe right there, it's at your, you risk your life riding your bike through there.
Sure.
So if, look at how that might be worked in, into this plan, how the ability to access Cooley Road, for example.
Okay.
Have a safe, safe five-foot-wide lanes on it. And we have a bicycle trail coming up the other side on Carmichael that ends.
Okay.
Down there, so keep that in mind as a, just, we, we need to fix that.
Okay.
And so we would be looking to have that incorporated.
All right, excellent, yeah, I can do that. Make sure I mention that when we're, as we go further in the process with that portion of the development.
Is the secondary access to Tower Road, is that going to come out into Troy Township or?
We've actually, you know, we, in more detailed conversations, that's probably an access that we wouldn't have just with the complexity of that current road and the township and whatnot. So we would probably not have that, we would eliminate that. We would just have to make an adjustment to the, to the flow here for fire and whatnot, access for the apartment condo area.
Out of curiosity, with the ball field, is that, is there any public access of usage with the ball field or is that strictly for that group?
No, we would, we would try to accommodate the city, absolutely. It would have to work around the, the schedule of the Northwoods League team, but we would be more than happy to let, you know, you know, work with the city on, on special events and state tournaments and things like that.
Concerts?
Concerts, yeah, a variety of different things, so.
All right, anybody else? Anything? Clint, I think that's really exciting. Great to have you here, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
More to come. All right. Consent agenda?
To approve the regular session meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand sixteen, to approve claims in the amount of three hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Details available in the clerk's office. Contingent about payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check, approve the issuance of a regular operator's license to Matthew Sparstead for the period December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. To approve the installation of a flashing school sign on eastbound Cooley Trail at County Road F. To approve the application for a secondhand jewelry dealer license for David Inlow of Inlow Designs located at five twenty-three Second Street for the period of January first, two thousand seventeen through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Contingent upon payment of any outstanding debt to the city. To forward the request of the town of Troy for restrictions for truck traffic on Tower Road to the Public Works Committee and to city staff for review and recommendations. And to place on file the December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen public utility commission minutes. That is all.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, second to approve. The Rocko, Marsette?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hockett?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Unfinished business, discussion, possible action on request for extension of timely starter provision for liquor licenses, number one, for Lolo, American Kitchen, and two, Pedro's Del Este.
I sent the emails to both of them. They have representatives here from both places, correct? Yeah, so if you have questions, Peter's here and a gentleman from Lolo's here. If you have any specific questions for them, they have indicated the dates in there that they're planning on being opened, so.
They have representatives here from both places, correct? Yep, so if you have questions, Peter's here and a gentleman from Lolo's here. If you have any specific questions for them, they have indicated the dates in there that they're planning on being opened, so...
Yeah. I'll move to approve the extension for Lolo.
Second.
Okay, first one, Lolo moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the extension for Pedro's Del Estee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Pedro's, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Both extensions are granted, gentlemen. If you have any other delays, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, possible action on Class B retail beer license for Eric McGregor, doing business as Carbone's Pizza.
As I noted in the finance committee, this is basically a transfer of ownership. The business will continue as it is, it's just a change in ownership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hey, got a motion, a second, discussion?
This will be contingent on the surrender of the current license and all of the, you know, inspections, whatever else needs to be taken care of.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on bids received for new squad vehicles, vehicle?
Vehicles.
Vehicles, oh, we're doing them both?
Two vehicles.
Okay.
Sent out RFPs to Hudson Ford, River Valley Ford, and Ewald Ford. Obviously, they came in. Hudson Ford's the lowest, at 21,790. We need to order these now in December because it takes 90 to 120 days to get, so we want to make sure we get them by March or April so that we can get them in and outfitted and so forth and get them on the road. So that's why we do this right away once the budget has been approved.
Okay?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. Thanks, chief. You know, all I have is, I hope everybody liked what they saw tonight with the presentation. I think it's pretty exciting stuff for the city. It's great to have something finally being considered for over there, and...